There's definitely one. My news, he's been by.
Okay, welcome to those in the viewing audience and those that have joined us here personally in the council chambers, like call this meeting to order. And if we could stand, I'll do the invocation and we'll stay, follow with the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for our city, our state, and our country. Please be with us as we deliberate the issues of our citizens and help us to find the best solutions for those issues. Be with all of those in our military serving in foreign lands. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda here tonight is a special presentation. We don't have one person that was supposed to come and receive it, but we did promise to read the, I guess, a couple of meetings ago, and we have since presented this resolution in honor, honoring Gordon C. Housel Jr. We gave this to him at a special dinner where we recognized his achievements and as well as what he was going to continue to do for that. But I, since we did not read it out loud, I was going to read that here this evening, and then I believe you've got a couple of personnel issues you'd like to, or introductions you'd like to make. So, reading this, this is a resolution honoring the Honorable Gordon C. Housel Jr., whereas Gordon C. Housel Jr. began his public service with the City of Pecosin in July of 1982 upon his election to city council as a representative from the central precinct. And whereas in 1990, city council elected Gordon C. Housel Jr. to be vice mayor, and he held this position until 1994, at which time he decided not to seek reelection to city council. And whereas in 1996, after a two-year hiatus from city council, Gordon C. Housel Jr. decided to seek election as mayor and was successful in his bid for this office. And whereas Gordon C. Housel continuously served as mayor of Pecosin from his election in 1996 until his election as delegate of the Virginia General Assembly necessitating his resignation from city council on March 9, 2011. And whereas, in addition to his role in local government, Gordon C. Housel Jr. was and still is a very active member of the community, having served at one time as the chief of the volunteer fire department, ultimately attaining life membership, assisting those in need through monetary contributions, physical labor, to rebuild personal homes and city facilities, and offering comfort and advice when needed. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the City of Pecosin, Virginia does hereby recognize the outstanding leadership of Gordon C. Housel Jr. as a member, vice mayor and mayor of Pecosin City Council, does hereby express sincere gratitude and appreciation for his many years of distinctive service, acknowledges and commends the many acts of kindness and caring spirit shown not only to the citizens of Pecosin, but to other localities in need of and for the continual support shown to all city employees. Be it further resolved that Gordon C. Housel Jr. has touched the lives of many and his presence on council will be sorely missed. And be it further resolved that the members of the city council do hereby extend congratulations and best wishes to Gordon C. Housel Jr. as he embarks upon his journey as delegate to the Virginia General Assembly. Again, that's what we presented to the outgoing mayor at a function. We continue to be partners with Gordon as he is now our delegate. Probably an additional announcement is that finally, the Supreme Court has ruled on the new, I guess, zones or districts for the general assembly and for the state senate. As such, the City of Pecosin, besides Gordon C. Housel Jr. as delegate, now has a new state senator, and that would be Senator Tommy Norman. And he is now a state senate member for the City of Pecosin. So, want to make that clear as well.
Randy?
We have extended an invitation to the senator to join us at a meeting this summer, if his schedule permits. Also, two items. Mr. Wine, if you'd come forward. It is my pleasure to introduce to you members of council and to the public, Kevin Wine. Kevin is our new principal planner. He comes to us most recently, served in the planning department in the town of Warrenton. Mr. Wine?
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Council, my name is Kevin Wine. As Mr. Wheeler mentioned, I come from the town of Warrenton, most recently. Served there for about the last year and a half. Prior to that, I was with the City of Hopewell, south of Richmond. I grew up in Richmond, Virginia, in the vicinity anyway, Powhatan County, actually. I graduated from VCU in 2006 with a degree in urban studies and geography, and thoroughly enjoy the field of development and planning, and I look very forward to working with you all.
Hey, we look very forward to working with you as well, Kevin. And welcome to our city. And I'm sure that you'll be hearing from all of us at one time or another. We are intimately familiar with the planning department, and good luck dealing with your boss.
She can be hard to...
She keeps us straight.
Okay, thank you.
Randy, the other thing, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
This is part of my periodic attempt to embarrass the finance department staff. Theresa, if you and Robin would come forward and... I just wanted to present publicly the certificate that we've recently received from the Government Finance Officers Association for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the last CAFR. You know, as a foundation of any government, you need to budget well, have top-notch accounting, and report it in a way that it is responsible, consistent, and is readable to both our bondholders and, more importantly, the citizens we serve. So, I want to congratulate you on that. I want to also express my appreciation to the Commissioner of the Revenue and to the Treasurer. This is a team effort. This doesn't happen by accident. And this is a word that comes at the end, but it's really recognition of quality work that goes on throughout the year. So, congratulations to you both.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our other special presentation for the evening. Ready to move forward. Recently, the city received notification that the flood insurance rate map process that had been the subject of our discussions late last summer and in early fall, had come to a process where they had, point in the process where they had formalized the maps. And from that point forward, we have a specified amount of time to incorporate those maps and make any ordinance changes that may be necessary to require that. We have invited Charlie Banks from DCR, who many of you know, please go on forward, Charlie, to come and provide a brief summary of what this process is, of where we are, what we need to do from this point forward, and what are the consequences to our citizens, A, of moving forward, and what the consequences would be of not moving forward. This is not to be confused with the velocity project that's going on now, but this is the process that was the subject of our public mailing in September in October. Charlie?
All right, well, good evening. Certainly is a pleasure to be here. I always enjoy coming to Pecosin. I gotta slow down and read that plaque, though, on the road, on the way in, coming in.
Great marsh.
Talks about what a Pecosin is.
We'll get you a picture of that if you'd like. Put it in your office.
Is that a dry spot in a marsh? Is that it?
That's it. It's not that dry.
It's a really big marsh, I think.
Basically, the flood maps. The city has gotten a letter of final determination. Six months from the date of that letter of final determination, FEMA has to have the adopted ordinance from the city that adopts the maps. The ordinance has to be in compliance with the regulations, the requirements in the in 44 CFR. I believe the ordinance is already up to DCR. Is that right? My coworker, Allison Meehan, is the one, is the individual who's been working with the city on the flood maps and on the ordinance, and I believe that she started reviewing it. She certainly, we certainly have it up in our offices. I somewhat apologize, I discovered last night that I would be able to come here, so I'm only marginally prepared for this. Didn't think I would be here. So, Allison will work, or I will work, if she cannot, with you on the ordinance, make sure it will be accepted by FEMA. The, certainly the biggest change that has to be made is the date of the new maps has to be incorporated into the ordinance. There may be some other changes. I guess she's worked with you on, has there been any changes other? Okay. There's usually a few changes. FEMA changes the way they look at the regs a little bit. They change our requirements, and so the changes get incorporated into the ordinance. But we will work with the city. We've got a fairly competent checklist that we use to make sure that the ordinance, when FEMA reviews it, it will pass their evaluation. And the best thing to do is to go ahead and incorporate the new date into the ordinance, move forward with whatever extra groups that the ordinance has to be looked at, possibly the planning commission, you know, has to be advertised, the whole administrative process act requirements. And then it's adopted. We, DCR gets a copy of the signed document. We go through a final evaluation and send up electronically, if we can just do all this electronically, we send it to FEMA, we send the ordinance and the checklist to FEMA, and they review it, and they approve it. That's the ultimate goal. If they do not get it on time, or if it's, doesn't meet the requirements, if it's not in compliance with the regs, the city will be suspended from the program, from the National Flood Insurance Program, until an ordinance that is in compliance gets to FEMA. That would have considerable ramifications here in Pecosin, is that, what, 80% or so is in the floodplain?
Yeah.
So, a lot of the city, there's a lot of policies, a lot of flood insurance policies in the city. When the community is suspended from the program, those policies will not be renewed. If they are associated with a mortgage on a home, on a structure, and the policy comes due for renewal and the city is suspended, the policy cannot be renewed. That puts the, I imagine that it puts the mortgage in jeopardy. So, we don't want that to happen.
Jeez.
Yeah. So, we will do all that we can to help the city get it up to FEMA on time, ahead of time. I guess the key thing is to get the, get the ordinance adopted in plenty of time. You know, if we can, if we could shoot for, I think November is, is the date, sometime in November?
November 2nd.
November 2nd, okay. So, shoot for sometime September, maybe? Give a couple of months, buffer?
I think, I think we expect to see it here in August.
Okay.
So, to give you plenty of time. We recognize how important it is to the citizens. That's, we won't say we'll approve it right then, but we'll see it for the first time in August.
Charlie, can I recap what I heard you say, just to make sure that I'm clear? We've gotten the final determination letter, and when we got it, that started a six-month clock with FEMA. This locality, and any locality that gets that final determination and goes on the six-month clock, has that amount of time to make the ordinance changes, which could be as simple as updating the map reference, or could be more extensive, depending on where that locality is and how it's worked over time. But that we've got six months from that date. If for any reason we have not provided an approvable or approved FEMA updated ordinance by that time, this locality would be suspended from the National Flood Insurance Program until such time that that was rectified.
Yes.
And that would mean that people that had flood insurance policies would not be able to do their annual renewal, and that anyone seeking to buy property for the first time would be unable to get...
That's correct.
...national flood insurance policy at the same time. So, the consequences, there's a pretty bright line as to what the consequences are. You didn't focus on this yet, but I know that through the fall, we notified first a group of several hundred people, and then we decided that we couldn't be sure we didn't get, we had them all, so we notified everyone in the city of potential changes that would affect their property as associated with this process. Some people, I believe Debbie can nod if I'm on the right track, chose to pursue appeals to that process, a fairly small number, and those processes are either in process or have concluded. But citizens also have the ability to pursue a letter of map amendment if they believe that the data on which the finding for their property was based was enacted. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. There is a letter of map change process, program, that enables a, the owner of a structure, if they feel, if the map has, if the boundary of the floodplain has shifted with a new map, and the, and now incorporates part of a structure, putting it into the floodplain and requiring possibly flood insurance. If the owner feels that this is not correct, the, there is this process, the letter of map amendment for homeowner, the homeowner can have a survey done on the property determining the elevation of the lowest adjacent grade and the first floor, finished floor, which will be compared to the base flood elevation for the 100-year flood. That signed and sealed document goes with the letter of, with the application for the letter of map amendment to FEMA. FEMA looks at that, their engineers and mapping experts look at it, and make a formal determination as to whether or not the structure is, is out of the floodplain and, according to their opinion, does not need insurance. However, it's still up to the mortgage company. The mortgage company has a prerogative to still require flood insurance if it's that close. But yes, there is a, is a way for a, an owner to try to get out of the need for flood insurance.
Thank you.
And that's open at any time. I mean, I guess what you're really describing there is that FEMA is an organization that's done this study based on maps and satellite images and the like, and our own GIS information. And if the citizen knows more than at any time, they can make this request for map adjustments regardless...
Yes, it's not necessarily tied to a...
...how we do it. So, the key for the city council here is that we make the process, that we get through our process, but people can always appeal their personal circumstance back.
That's correct.
And that's the key. And I guess the second thing that, for the general awareness of the citizens, would be that FEMA is now doing an additional study on the City of Pecosin, doing with wave velocity.
Yes.
And that would be in addition to, or tacked on to, the study.
Yes.
So, there's, there's more possibility that your property will be impacted based on that. And Randy, do you have a concept of, or do you have a concept for when that study will be wrapped up?
They are just getting started with that. It's a...
Six months, a year?
I don't think we'll see the first preliminary map with that bit of information on it until 2012, sometime 2012.
Okay, very good.
Yes, they've had a, they've had the, Robin Danforth came and talked on the, that study, the, I'm sorry. Your Sergeant Corbin Engineers is doing the storm surge model, and that information is being incorporated into the flood maps for all the coastal communities, eastern shore, all along the Chesapeake Bay. But it's a, it's kind of like a phase two to the digitization that occurred, was, occurred with the flood maps. So, the coastal communities get a, get an initial phase two, rest of the state's gonna get a later phase two. But that will be another round of map change and ordinance adoption, whenever that comes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for your help in, in getting the city through this and explaining to us and being at all the meetings with us to make sure that we stayed on the right timeline. It's very important to our citizens and very important to our council. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the audience for visitors. Welcome to take any speakers on any subject. I will remind everybody that we do have a public hearing, so if you're here to talk about the comprehensive plan for parks and recreational, recreation sub-element, then you can save those comments until we open that public hearing. Any others? Okay? If not, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes for the regular session on May 23, 2011.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Judy?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. And the regular session?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the minutes of the work session held on May 23, 2011.
Second. Okay, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. And the next item on the agenda is the public hearing, and the public hearing is, the subject is the comprehensive plan revision, and this would be adding a Parks and Recreation sub-element to the existing comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor, this, you have seen this before, and it's been subject of a recent work session with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, has since gone to the planning commission. They suggested a handful or so of modifications. Mr. Powers is here, representing the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and he's prepared to briefly summarize the goals and objectives of the revision and to highlight to you the suggested changes by the planning commission. And I'm sure answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Before I start, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to submit the suggested revision, and I say this on behalf of the other, of the eight members of the Parks and Recreation Board, and I'd also like to thank staff for their support in this matter. The goals of the board with respect to changes in the comprehensive plan was to update the Parks and Recreation section of the plan and make it more of a 20-year plan rather than what we felt was kind of a five, seven-year plan. To update the plan to reflect the current status of existing facilities, they've made a lot of progress, for instance, in South Lawson Park. Update the plan to reflect, to reflect potential future growth in the population and increase housing, and update the plan to reflect any immediate plans in the facilities, for instance, things are in the comprehensive plan right now. I mean, not the capital improvement plan. The plan does not address staffing, and it doesn't address specific programs. We felt that we should be focusing on facilities. The changes to the sub-element that were suggested, we had, I guess, two televised discussions, and I could go through it again, but I don't think you want to hear it again.
Yeah, just agree.
Where we went through and explained a number of things we did in the changes, and at the planning commission, they had a few, few items, and I'll go through those. The first one is the museum property, Pecosin Museum, the walking path opened to the public, and staff contacted Diane Holloway from the museum, and she, and they found out that there are currently being fabricated some signs that say, "Open to the Public from Dawn to Dusk," so it will be open. Right now, there are no trespassing signs until those signs come in, and once those will be in, the police can enforce the no trespassing on the property during the hours that it's closed. As such, the museum trail was added to the figure on the map and, that showed the overall facilities, and referenced in the walking trail section. They, as well as you, suggested that we add the comment, "Private and public partnership could possibly use to construct the Recreation Community Center and, in the city, rather than the city solely constructing and overseeing such a facility." This was done, and as, like I said, it was mentioned in the city work session, or council work session. There is a small boat ramp referenced, the one that was at the end of Ren's Road, the private boat ramp that is now, now closed, was referenced in the document. They suggested it be removed as a reference because it wasn't city property, and that reference was removed from the document. There was a diagram that we did in the presentation, you may recall, where we talked about parks being within a three-quarter mile walk, a 15-minute walk from residents' houses. The Oxford Run Trail was not included as a, is a, what do we call it, a, a outdoor park, and, and they suggested that we change it to an existing park. And, and I did that. However, that figure, in reference to the three-quarter mile radius of the 15-minute walk from your house to public parks, was not included in the original plan, and it did not get updated as such. If such is your desire, that that figure and some words to that end be included, you may wish to vote on the chapter tonight, and I would suggest that you direct the city manager and major, and mayor to approve the specific words, wording, and the figure prior to its inclusion. There was a misspelling that was put in the word, I'm dyslexic, I spelled kiln to ken, and that was fixed, too. And that was, those were the changes they requested, and if you have any questions, I'll be more...
I only have one, and it's probably more just a clarification, because you talked about the Ren's Road boat ramp, but there's, there's actually two ramps at Ren's Road, one being a public facility and one being a private. So, in the plan, it just removed the reference to the privately owned facility.
Yes, it did.
But it left the other one.
That's right. It left the one at Ren's Road and said it needed to be fixed.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that I...
And maintain.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll open the public hearing, and if anybody has any comments on the comprehensive plan revision, now's the time to address council. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution amending the 2008-2028 comprehensive plan.
With or without the planning?
With the changes.
And then, in addition, I think Mr. Powers specifically said with the map?
We'll leave that as it is.
Leave that as it is. Okay? No change?
Right.
It could be amended at a future date if it, if it needed to be.
I'll amend my motion to include those.
Second? Okay. We have a motion and a second in favor of revising the comprehensive plan, adding the Parks and Recreation sub-element. Any other questions, comments, or concerns of council?
Just thank you. I know you all took a lot of time on this. It was not a quick task, and I, we all appreciate the work that you've done.
Good. Very good. All right, Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, very good. And again, thank you and thank your committee as well. Pass all our thanks to them. Unfinished business. Ordnance amending Appendix A of the zoning ordinance of the city of Pecosin pertaining to portable storage containers. And this is a second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I would simply note that the two modifications that the council requested and enacted upon as your last meeting, the removal of yard waste and changing of the temporary placement from 72 hours to 30 days have been incorporated. There have been no other changes.
Anybody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Pecosin, Virginia to include provisions for portable storage facilities as amended in our last meeting.
Second. A motion made and seconded that we adopt the ordinance amending Appendix A of the zoning ordinance. Questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, Judy, would you please call a roll?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero. And this ordinance will become effective in 30 days.
All right. Now going to new business. First item under new business is a resolution revising the city's financial policy guidelines.
Mr. Mayor, this item is brought to you a change that is required under the new GASB generally accounted, fairly acceptable. I used to know this. Thank you. See, it doesn't, acronym doesn't line up. Government Accounting Standards Board. Yeah, there you go. These are essentially changed in the way that we report our fund balances. And we'll make some minor changes to how, what kind of box we put it in. But in the end of the day, these changes are for reporting purposes. They have no practical effect on how you have managed your money. And Teresa's here and I'm sure she will, is, she is prepared to speak to this. But one of the things that I would draw your attention to, if you'd just go back with me to the third page, what I asked Teresa to do is show us the 2010 fund balance, the one that you're familiar with, the one that was just incorporated into the award that the finance department had received. And just show you the difference in what your fund balance would look like, how it's reported from the way that we reported in 2010 under the standards of that time and what the new standards would make in terms of presentation. Again, you'll see that the numbers add up to the same. It's a different way to report it. Teresa, anything you want to add?
No, unless I have questions about examples or lots of examples.
Anybody have any questions?
I have, I'm sorry. I do have a question.
Come up to the podium, please.
The, I noticed at the bottom of the page, there's stars that says, "Details of the non-spendable restricted and committed balances will be included in a separate footnote." The one thing that I like about the way we're doing it now as opposed to what we will be doing in the future is it's more transparent. You know where the money's going. So my question is, in the future, is it possible to put subtitles under them and include construction, fire department, library?
Actually, we can put it on the face of the financial statements or we can put it in the footnotes. I think generally people are putting it in the footnotes, but either way it can be presented.
Okay, so it's doable and not too much trouble.
Not at all.
I would just like to express that I would like to see that because I'd like knowing more specifically where things are going.
All that information, it would be in the footnotes, but it can be on the face of the financial statement either way.
Teresa, if I could suggest, if we're going to make that change, I suggest we put it in both places. And the reason being that your footnote can explain much more than a single line on a general...
It's actually a good thing that we can...
I'm not sure we can do it in both places, but I'm sure...
You're not sure we can do it in both?
I don't know if we can do it in both places. I don't know if I get a comment. But we can, we will.
Y'all can just give a couple of options and just let us see it. I'm sure that, yeah. I think...
Details are good.
Just by knowing where it's at, I think everybody would be well pleased.
Any other questions?
I did have another question. It's on page five. I suppose the city of Pecosin financial policy guidelines, are we there yet? Can I talk about that page?
Sure.
The unassigned fund balance says that we're going, the general fund balance at the close of each fiscal year should be told to 15 percent. And my question is, why at the close of the year rather than as an average of the year or as an ongoing number? And that's my question.
It's a date of measurement. We can measure it at the end of the year as opposed to throughout the year. And it's a, it basically was recommended by the financial advisors as well.
I believe that in comparing local governments for purposes of credit rating, et cetera, they pick a day and time. The day they pick is the last day of the fiscal year as you close. For us, that's an advantage because we're not in the middle of one of our downtimes, three weeks before our collection. But in fact, a few weeks afterwards. We could report it at other times and in fact, we do.
You do.
For purposes of our audit.
Financial statement.
Which is a year-end audit. That is, that is the one moment in time that we have it best because of the fact that you've got accruals that go into the month of July and halfway through August. You have some state accruals like a CSA, which we don't get until September. So it actually is about a three-month process, all designed to get to what it really was from an accounting standpoint on a specific day. I'm not sure that we could pick another day.
I don't think so.
In the year and be able to do that as well. But we certainly can give you our cash flows at any moment.
Any other questions for Teresa?
Thank you.
Any questions of anybody? Somebody prepared to make a motion on the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution adopting revised financial policy guidelines.
Second. I have a motion made and seconded on the resolution to adopt the revised financial policy guidelines. Any other questions, comments or concerns? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is resolution accepting real property from and transferring real property to the Pecoson Public Schools.
Mr. Mayor, this is an important cleanup item. Essentially, as you can see from the diagram on page four, there are portions of property that are generally in use in this city that you might think are school uses that in fact owned by the city. And conversely, there are items such as some of the ball fields, baseball diamonds, that are actually owned by the school board that are routinely maintained, operated and used by the city. And what we're attempting to do here is sort of clean that up. Give to the schools those things that are most appropriately schools, receive from the schools those parcels of land that are most appropriately city. Nothing in this would in any way change the way we work together, but we put primary ownership with the primary user. The school board considered this item at its last meeting, which was last week, and did approve it in the affirmative. And there is a modified resolution at the dais. I did have one question once I saw it. Will we, you know, need to go back and ask the schools to modify what they've approved?
This does copy exactly what the school board adopted.
Thank you. So it was on prep on our end. Good catch. Debbie is here and can answer some questions. Dave worked with her as well and Steve Pappas and others with the schools on this item. And basically we just put it where we think it should be.
I think council's well familiar with this item as we've talked about it at a couple of work sessions. And this allows us to work in conjunction with the Pecoson Little League to put a new concession stand and restroom facility at the, at the football and baseball stadium so that we can enjoy better facilities there. So anybody's got a motion in the resolution?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept the real property from and transferring real property to the Pecoson Public Schools.
Second.
As modified? Modified resolution? As modified.
Yeah, we have a motion made and seconded on the adopted resolution, on to adopt the resolution that's at our place in lieu of the one that's in the book. And any other questions, comments or concerns? If not, Judy, would you please call a roll?
One quick question before that. Is this going to change in any way the responsibility for the fields, the various fields?
Not at all.
Not at all? I mean, as far as lining and the grass cutting and things like that?
No, because we have already been operating in a manner that's consistent with this since the fields went in. We just, the property transfers, as important as that is, Mr. Krieger, was something, was a detail that we hadn't completed.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. And next item under new business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Branscombe Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jones is here, our director of public works, and is prepared to answer your questions. In summary, our, what was our current paving bid expired. We went out and went through the invitation for bid process. We are recommending for your approval, contract award to Branscombe Incorporated. You see their per ton cost in the, in the summary. And I expected that one of you would ask a very reasonable question is how does that compare to our former contract price? Mr. Jones is prepared to answer that question and give you any other information that you require.
Yeah, back in, actually last year's, or the last contract we had was actually cheaper than the year before. So last year's contract was $60.18 a ton in place. And that's, you know, actually put down, rolled, you know, finished product. And the previous contract was a little bit more. It was 6103. And of course, y'all see, it's gone up drastically, the asphalt content, prices of just fuel prices. Everything has gone up. And really, we only got the two bids, as you can see. And that's normally what we get. We send it out, but we normally only get a couple of bids. Any other questions?
The increase in price per ton, is that going to cut back on the paving we do as far as streets?
Most definitely.
By, any idea what?
Well, I haven't calculated it right down to the, you know, to the penny, but it's going to cut some streets. Actually, this bid got out late and I'm not going to be able to do anything probably till after July. So actually, I can combine, you know, that money from last year carries over or this year will carry over. So I'll be able to get, we'll get a lot done. We'll get a lot done. And we're saving money in some other areas that, you know, in some drainage projects that we're doing, trying to do some in-house to save some money. So that's going to actually, you know, make the paving go a little bit farther. So that's going to help us out.
Are you going to award this across the board to Branscombe? I noticed their price for milling is higher, but their utility adjustments are a lot lower. So if you're going, in other words, you're not going to ask Basic to do milling for Branscombe, I wouldn't think.
Not, of course, I'll talk to Randy about it, but we're planning on going forward, giving them the whole thing. Because you can't, it's hard to, it's hard to do that. You have to go, you know, it's such a big project. You can't get one milling operation in. You've got to go kind of, kind of both because the paving's got to be right behind the milling. So... Any other question?
Given the volatility in the petroleum market, is there any possibility that there would be an adjustment later in the year?
It's possible. And it, you know, the adjustment will go, you know, from the, it's like asphalt content. It's, it goes off an index. So it's a possibility, hopefully a slim one. But it is possible.
I might add that this is a one-year contract. So if things look favorable to rebid, we will, for sure, a year from now. When Tom talked about what the cost was this past year and the year before, that was a time where it was advantageous for the public, for us to extend the terms of the contract. And so we'll, we'll definitely do whatever's the right thing to do. As, as Mr. Krieger said, you know, you don't have to be too bright at math to realize that at $80, $81 a ton delivered and in place, you can get a whole lot less done than you would at 60 and some change. And for all intents and purposes, the money the state is providing to us to help with this is, is not going up. And as we've used it also for drainage, our buying power is going down further.
That's 25 percent increase.
Believe it. We're making it go as far as we can. We're getting the best bang for our buck, you know, so.
We know that you are. We also want to be real about the expectations for us. And basically, we're talking about 25, a good 25 percent increase, which means in theory, a 25 percent decrease in lane miles that's repaved. If you're, you know, with good management, you will make some of that up. But certainly, it won't come out to be equal. And I hear that. And I guess the one thing I would tell council is that as we approach the end of the year, that the one thing that we did do was we set aside a portion of the unappropriate fund balance for increases in petroleum costs. Now, I think we actually did it for another reason. But if we decide that at a later date, that there's just more lane miles that have to be done, then we could always look to where we appropriated that money.
Does our contract have the state escalation clause tied to the liquid price?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's a chance.
It's a chance.
That when you do it, it could be low.
That'd be excellent. Well, assigned out to you, Tom, if you can get that done.
We'll do the best we can.
Watch your stock.
Okay. Any other questions, comments or concerns? If not, can, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I propose a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter a contract with Branscombe Incorporated.
A motion made and seconded. I don't think we'll have any more.
Mr. Mayor, I was just pointing out to Councilman Bernal that possibly you would want to consider amending the resolution to include a statement that this is a one-year contract, but that you can renew it for three additional one-year periods. So that that's set out in the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I will amend my resolution to include that statement and the one-year contract with three one-year renewals.
Second. Second. All right, with that amendment, Judy, would you please call a roll?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much. Next item under new business is an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2011.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry with you. I'll let Teresa come up and walk us through this one.
This basically is a housekeeping for the end of the year and a couple of other minor grants and stuff. We had additional cost at the regional jail, additional usage at the Merrimack Center and the Juvenile Detention Center. We had some unbudgeted, illegal things that we had to do. And those things are transfers to kind of move money around where we had some savings somewhere else. We did sell some police cards that will, that we've appropriated to the police department for them to use for their aging fleet. There was a grant that was received in the economic development. And this budgets those funds. As well as the library had some additional budgeted revenue for their passports. And they'd like to use that for technology in the library. And the last two things are going to the Capital Projects Fund, which is the Little League, transfer the Little League funds from the memorandum of understanding. And then the money raised by the committee, the Kids Island Committee, to put towards Kids Island Project. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2010 to 2011.
Second. There we have a motion made and seconded. Any questions, comments or concerns? Not, Judy, would you please call a roll?
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye. Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Bernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is an ordinance making an additional appropriation and transfer for fiscal year 2012.
Mr. Mayor, this item is a follow-up from your previous retreat earlier this month. This action would provide funds from the general fund balance in the year 2012, which would allow us to implement the Economic Development Strategic Plan that Mr. Callis brought forward for your consideration a few months ago. It would provide a entry-level professional salary, person to work with Mr. Callis and myself as our person on the ground. As you know, we don't have any dedicated resources for economic development at the moment. This item assumes ten months on the salary and benefits, because we'll, we'd need to go through a process of application and hiring. And it's such a, for all intents and purposes, full year operating and partial year salary, and the operating budget was pretty slim to begin the, things like computer startup we need, so. That's what it is, we're happy to answer any questions. Mr. Callis is here, if you have any questions, if you have.
Questions? Not, somebody prepared with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2011 through 2012.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded. Questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Judy, please call the roll.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Bernal?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. And finally, the final item under new business is a resolution making appointments to the various boards and commissions.
Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of the resolution, making the following appointments to boards and commissions, to the Colonial Behavioral Health Agency, Mary Diggs, to the Virginia Alcohol Safety Action Program, Charles Buffington, to the Workforce Development Consortium, Frank Krieger, with Herbert Buddy Green as the alternate, to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, that would be Randy Wheeler, and to the Library Advisory Board from the Central Precinct, George Curtis.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion made and seconded, and I think we're ready to move to a vote on that. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilman Krieger?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Bernal?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Thank you for moving through that. It's kind of a lengthy agenda, council, so I appreciate y'all moving so quickly through there. We're now to comments of the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a few things, and I'll try to be brief. Just a reminder to the public that these non-emergency offices in the city will be closed on Monday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. Also, to let folks know that beginning July 1st, the city code will be available online for anybody that cares to access it. It'll be a very convenient tool for you, and you'll also have near-instantaneous ability to retrieve any amendments to the code, so I think that's a very good improvement. A reminder to those that are already participating or thinking about it, that the Mayor's Cup Blood Drive, which is a Red Cross Blood Drive event, it's a challenge between all the Mayor's and Hampton Roads. This is, we're a first-time participant, but other locales have been doing this for a while. We have, I believe, almost forty slots filled. We still have some slots for those that wish to come and be part of that event. You do not need to be a city employee, but it started out as a city-county employees, but it's really open to all members of the community. It is Wednesday, the 29th of June, from 1:00 to 7:00 in this room, and we would ask anybody that wishes to either volunteer, just to help, or to give blood, to contact Theresa Owens at 868-3031, or the city manager's office, if that's more convenient for you. We still have a few spots left, and this would be a great opportunity for us to make the other jurisdictions in Hampton Roads look bad, because they're bigger than us, but it's done on percentage of workforce. So this is one that we can, that we can win. We've also been asked to announce and share with the public that Senator Webb will be in Pecosin on July the 13th, in our library conference room from 10:00 to 2:00. His purpose of the, of the visit is to meet with constituents specifically if they have issues pertaining to social security, Medicare, Medicaid benefits, veterans' benefits, but also, I'm sure, any issue that you think the senator either can help you with or needs to know about. He will be here again on the 13th of July from 10:00 to 2:00. One other item, and this is relatively late-breaking, I apologize, it's not in the written report. For the last several days, we have received two complaints, which really included a complaint of a third person, so I guess I can say three, of an increasing practice of boats being moored to the seawall, their best point, not for loading and unloading, but sort of permanently camping out or there for extended time. I understand, over the weekend I didn't see it, but there was a large boat that was, that was moored there pretty much all day, one day. I went down to observe it today, there were three boats unattended, moored to the wall, and that is making it difficult for other persons that want to use it for loading and unloading to do so. We called VMRC to understand who had jurisdiction, because if the boats were moored there and anchored in the water, we weren't sure we had jurisdiction there, we just didn't know. And what we were told by VMRC is that really they had no jurisdiction over the seawall or the people that would dock, tie a boat there, but that if the city council felt that it was appropriate, the way to address that issue would be to pass a local ordinance making, designating a loading and unloading zone, which would allow us to put in a reasonable time for, for, for use, but also a reasonable time to leave when you're finished. Would give us enforcement ability, ability to write tickets. I mean, not that that's what we're about, but we could sign it appropriately and hope that that would be sufficient. To my question, and I don't mean to catch you cold, but since you are the summer schedule, you don't meet quite as often, is, is there at least enough interest in considering this that staff should move forward to bring you a draft, you know, at your next regular meeting?
Yeah, I believe so.
We will get it to you for your consideration at the first opportunity we can. Thank you, that concludes everything I have.
Okay. Dr. Bernal?
Couple of things. First of all, just wish everybody is safe and happy Fourth of July weekend. We received, I think each, each member of council received a letter from the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce concerning some recent legislation that was passed at the state level on some various benefits for businesses, tax breaks. I would just like to ask that perhaps we could look into that, to see if any of them would be applicable to us as we attempt to stimulate business and to support those who are local.
Okay. And the offsite that we're getting ready to come up to, might be a good time to talk about that?
Yeah.
Since we are talking about tax issues?
If, if we could borrow a copy of your letter?
Cool.
No, we didn't get one. There you go.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Rick?
No, that's it, thank you.
Buddy?
Yes, several things, since we didn't have a, a meeting at the 1st of June, I'll try to be real brief. Just some kudos and some congratulations. Tracy and I attended the Relay for Life at Tabb High School, and we really should thank Sharon and Ed Harper for our local team, and also Carol and Jesse Wood, who organized, Jesse was a co-chairman of it this year, and Carol organized the dinner event, and both of them were very well-done, and we appreciate all the work they did towards the Relay for Life. The Chesapeake Bay cleanup, Mel Linsley and Dave Callis did a super job of supervising that, getting that work done. The Tabernacle Block Party was a big success. The volunteers and the animal ministry were, did a super job, and, and was very impressive, and I hope they'll continue that. Tom, for, Tom Jones, for the reflectors along With Creek Road, I don't know if you've noticed them or not, but the yellow reflectors coming in and out of town to remind drivers that there is an area there that's for pedestrians and bicyclists, and to be aware that they're there, and do not wander over that, that white line. That, they, he did a great job putting those out. And all, and lastly, the American Legion Post 273 for their very meaningful retirement of the American, Virginia, and a few City of Pecosin flags. They did a great job, and it's a wonderful service. They, they burned over four thousand flags in about two hours. Did a great job.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you very much, Buddy. Frank?
Yeah, a couple weeks ago, I attended the Hampton Roads Partnership, and probably the most important thing that came out of that hour-long meeting was that Mr. Dickens, he plans to visit all seventeen members of the partnership with the legislative agenda, which he would like all the councils and board of supervisors to, to approve, prior to sending it to Richmond, to all the delegates of the area, figuring that by all seventeen in the partnership from this area approving it, it might add more clout to things that could be done in Richmond. So we could probably be looking forward to seeing someone from the partnership come over here in September timeframe and give a presentation of what they're offering. A lot of their ideas are big ideas, like they want to, you know, Amtrak, for example, is supposed to stop funding the railroad line between Newport News and DC come 2013, and rely solely on state money. And they're pushing, one of the things that the partnership is doing is pushing for state funding to increase from what it was in the past. They have a funding stream in place, they just don't have dollars to go along with it. And there are several other ideas, all big-scale stuff that they're looking at, trying to get across to the legislators. Come September, our library is going to have what they call a SNAP program. It's a shared network access point. We have two people in the library that have been trained by the One Step Program, then a New Horizons. And basically what it is, is anyone who is in need of a job, or perhaps is looking for a different job, they can go in there and get on a computer, they will have access to what's available down at the One Step Office itself, down at New Horizons, and they can come up and do a resume, do a cover letter, look at possible, look at what jobs are available, and take the different kind of tests to see what they are suited for. And that will, that will happen in the September timeframe. The library will be announcing it in their newsletter that comes out, I think sometime in early summer. And I guess for the city manager, in your recent discussions with the York County Administrator, was there any, any talk about the realignment of funding for various services that we share with York County?
We did discuss that again, I guess it's for the third year. The thing that's different is that they've asked, and I've asked Theresa to represent us at the staff level, to try to work something out and bring it back to us probably by the end of the summer, certainly well before budget time. So we've made a little bit of progress, but I don't want to misrepresent that we made a great amount of progress.
We got a deal, we didn't get a deal.
We didn't get a deal. But the issue has, has got more life than it has had.
And in addition to that, Frank, I'm glad that you brought that up, is that we also talked to them about the Victory Boulevard corridor and getting that on their long-range transportation point. So, and we've had a positive reception to that as well.
One of the things I guess that scares me about some things in New York County maybe is the 911 system, and how New York County can decide, I guess, pretty much for themselves, what kind of improvements they want to put into the system, and we just have to go along with it and roll with the punches. And I think maybe Gloucester or, and James City County, Williamsburg is probably in the same boat, that they have no say into what's being added to their systems.
Yeah, but we still share the sheriff though, right?
And we have, we have an agreement with the, with them as it relates to the 911 center, and I think as we look at the shared services, we have to look at that too, really, we have different types of agreements. The one that we have that relates to social services is probably, in my view, the best constructed one, in that it takes into account whole bunches of different factors, in terms of use, and demographics, and types of use, and, and it's a pretty complex formula. Others are very simple. And so I think the message we got from New York County is they were sort of willing to put all of the arrangements on the table back at one time.
I guess one of the things that we talked about and we approved earlier was the additional transfer funds to the New York jails. And is that, was that because of, they had overcrowded people, or was that because Pecosin provided over, you know, more people than, than was expected, or whatever?
I can answer that question if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
As it relates to the juvenile jails, that was because our percentage of use was up, meaning the percentage of the total population that was from Pecosin was higher than predicted. With respect to the, to the adult jail, it was both. Our percentage of use was up over our historic average, but also as the state cut funds from jails, and the federal inmates have disappeared largely from a lot of local jails. The amount of expenditure budget hasn't changed dramatically, but the sort of the other revenues are dropping, so. We did reduce the expenditure budget actually a lot, but we weren't able to get it off. So it's both of those factors, but unfortunately, our usage percentage, even though we're still the smallest, in terms of the adult, is, is, is going up.
It's scary.
Yeah.
Good. Bud?
Couple of things, I think Tracy's going to mention the fact that we both went to the food bank a few weeks ago, and we both attended the ribbon-cutting at Nassau Langley. And now, the food bank, it was impressive. They had ribbon-cutting ceremony at that new facility, and I encourage everyone listening to support the food bank. One of the things, I think they told us, if I remember the numbers correctly, is that every Friday, they send a backpack of food home with, it's either thirteen or eighteen-hundred kids, so they'll have something to eat over the weekend. Wouldn't it be a terrible thing if they were not there? And so, supporting the food bank is a really good thing, and, and they really do some good work. And Tracy, you can fill in things that I left out. Another thing is that I had opportunity this weekend to visit the Pecosin Museum, and I don't know how many of you have not been there yet, but you should take the opportunity to do that. We did walk all the trails, they have four really nice piers that go out over the marsh. It's going to be really nice when they finish, they have some really good plans. I was told that they plan to put a two or three-story lookout tower at the, at the furthest pier, so that you can look out over the marsh and, and see better down into the water. The four piers that they do have there now are well-constructed, and when they finish the pass, it's going to be really nice. They said they could build that thing for, I think they said ninety to a hundred thousand dollars, if one hundred people in Pecosin came up with a thousand-dollar investment, it could be there and would be great for the city. And so that's another good thing they should support. And the last, but probably one of the most important things, is to welcome Kevin Watts to City of Pecosin. Glad to have you.
Thanks, Bud, thanks for representing us at those, well, at those functions.
I was going to carry on about the Nassau ribbon-cutting of their new, new town, that was their first building of their new town. They're, I think they have plans for five or six new buildings, but they've made them all green, similar to what we did with the, the elementary school here. And it was really impressive, it was nice to go on a tour of that, I don't know how often, they, Nassau used to open up to the public once a year and let people go through, but it would be worth your, your time to go see that if, if it happens again anytime soon. I wanted to mention, to remind people that the summer library reading program is going on, so please come on up here and utilize that. I also wanted to mention, at Thomas Nelson Community College, there's a, a program called the Middle College, which is geared towards people aged, I think it's eighteen to twenty-four, who need to work towards a GED, or who have just gotten a GED, and who want to gain a skill. And there's a, there's some grant money available for that, and they really are very helpful. Franz Albertini at... Franz Albertini at Thomas Nelson Community College is the contact for that. But I saw a mention in the paper, it was very small, and I thought that was something that some of our youth may benefit from that. And finally, I wanted to have Randy address, if you would, please. I spoke to him about natural predators for possibly helping cut down on our mosquito population, so I think he's working with York County on that.
I am pleased to say that the folks in York County have been very helpful, and we're in the process of actually going and getting the state permit to use some of these fish, who are recently chronicized in the Daily Press. And essentially, they're freshwater fish that can go into BMPs and other ponds and help keep the mosquito larvae controlled. And they've been very good, and I think that they're going to help us at little to no cost, and their expertise in the subject, they're certainly offering for free. And hopefully by, we've been told it takes three to four weeks to get the state permit approval, but shortly thereafter, we should be importing fish from York County.
Are the osprey and the herons there off limits?
That's going to be easy pickings.
I think the herons do like them.
Of course, they're freshwater.
Yes.
So it'll be interesting.
And at some point, maybe we could talk about letting citizens get some, right?
We have been talking with them about that, but the issue is how do we do that? So we have talked with them, and it's not off our radar screen. But the issue is, how do we get them here? And if they've got to truck them here, then the cost for the citizens won't be free. So we're still working that out.
Thank you.
Those are great comments, and obviously, this time of year always brings up the discussion of mosquitoes and mosquito control. And I guess what I would like to say is that hats off to Jerry Kegel, who I met with right before the meeting about mosquito control in the City of Pecosin, and what a fine job they do do, as far as the work within this city can be, you know, 51% of our landmass you really can't even touch from the public streets. So bottom line is, with that kind of problem and that small a staff, they do an excellent job at mosquito control. As councilors, you know, the legislative agenda is coming up, the earlier the better if you have items to go on there. It sounds like frankly, we need to be proactive and go ahead and get on Dana Dickens' early list, if he has a list. That way, we'll be able to talk to both our new senator and as well as our new delegate, and make sure that we've got our concerns included in that. We have invited Senator Norman to come and speak. We'll see if that occurs, if his schedule allows. I know it's a busy time, as he has to run for a primary election in August, so his time is extremely tight, but we do welcome him as our new senator, as well as we send our best wishes to Senator John Miller, who represented us so well. And I'd like to see us prepare a letter for my signature for Senator Miller, for his service to our city.
Would you like to invite him to a meeting?
Absolutely. That would be great. We've visited a lot of folks on the economic development thing. We've been to Nassau and talked to Lisa Rowe. We've been to JDH and Associates. We are getting some bites. I visited briefly with the governor the other night at a function, and a form of our concerns for economic development, both here, but also for our neighbors at Nassau Langley, and trying to be the intermediary for a tour of that facility along with Admiral retired Quigley, who I talked to today about also stepping in on that. So we're pressing all fronts on that. TMDL will tell you that we continue to be challenged by the new regulatory requirements of the EPA, which are being passed down through the DEQ, and that would be on top of the sewer improvement issues that we have already through the consent order. So we've got our plate full as far as financial challenges to our infrastructure over the next few years. Staff has prepared a letter, and I'll make sure council gets a copy of that, that will be our concerns for TMDL over time, and kind of the lack of communication that we feel, that we sense on moving this ahead. Not trying to slam anybody, but we could certainly use some help from the technical side of things, and that help is not coming as quickly as we would like to meet their requirements. So you'll see a copy of that penned out. And that's all I've got. So I guess we have a closed session?
Yes, sir. We have a meeting for what I hope to be a short closed session.
Okay. So is there a motion to go into closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we convene a closed session pursuant to section 2.23711a3 of the Code of Virginia in 1950, as amended to discuss the disposition of publicly-held real property, i.e. messengers.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Judy, would you please?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much.